Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the February 20th meeting of the Common Council to order. I'll ask the clerk to call the rule to determine a quorum.
Alderman May.
Here.
Probst.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Wiegel.
Here.
Barzak.
Here.
Shaplesky.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Lasik.
Here.
Ten present and unexcused.
A quorum is present. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Alderman May.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to item D on our agendas. I just want to do a formal introduction of our new city clerk, Steve Bratz, who came to us from Muskego?
McGuannago.
I always get those two mixed up. Came somewhere south and west of here, and it started with an M. Welcome. You don't have to say anything, but welcome aboard. Moving to item E, public hearings. We have one item. I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Public hearing and a resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the interim city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of South 124 Street from West Lincoln Avenue to West Oklahoma Avenue and portions of intersecting streets by widening with a rural section asphalt pavement.
Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Okay, this is the public hearing for 124th Street. Here's the procedures for tonight. I will discuss the project's scope and cost. We'll talk about assessment rates and methods of payment, and then we'll have a time for comments and questions from the council, and then some time for citizens to speak as well. Then the hearing will be closed. The project will be referred to the Public Works Committee later tonight, and then later, later tonight, it would come back here for a final decision if they decide to do that. Here are the project limits. It goes from Lincoln Avenue to Oklahoma and National, same place. New Berlin will be paying for their half. West Dallas will be paying for our half. Fifty-fifty. Here are some pictures of the pavement. The pavement severely deteriorated, patched, potholed. Routine maintenance at this point is very difficult, very expensive. You can't, you can't fill all these cracks. This asphalt pavement was installed in 1989, so it's 29 years old. Alligator cracking like this is really the final stage of a pavement's life. Can't do much with that. Not only the pavement, but the drainage is a problem. I guess I wanted to point out that a lot of these culverts are full of soot, silt and mud. A lot of them are, if they're even under there, I don't, I don't know where they are. And on a day like today, not to say that all the ponding is because of this, but it certainly would help if there was adequate drainage for the road. Now, there are other things going on today with the ground still being frozen and excessive rain, but, but we do need to work on these ditches because they're not draining the water. The project will include a new thicker asphalt surface placed over a new thicker stone base course. There is a lot more traffic out there than when we did this in 1989. There will be some minor repairs to the underground utilities. The mailboxes will be temporarily relocated and then permanently reset once the road is done, so that'll all be taken care of. We are going to do about five to 10 feet of everyone's driveway. One, to get the culvert that's under the driveway out and replaced. And two, just to blend in with the new road, so we will be doing five to 10 feet of your driveway. The lawns will be replaced inside wherever we disrupt it. Residents should be able to access their driveways during the paving almost the whole time, except for the time when this machine is going by for a couple hours. But other than that, the goal is to get people into their driveway the whole time. There won't be any other traffic on the road, but the residents will be allowed to get in there. So here's one of the problems we'd like to address, is that there's no place to walk. These two people are in grave danger. So what I'm proposing to do is to pave this gravel shoulder with asphalt. We're not technically widening the road, but we're paving the shoulder. I mean, when I say widening the road, people think of extra lanes. We're not doing any of that. We're just going to pave the shoulder area, make it a bikeable, walkable place on the side. So it will look like this. This is in Brookfield. There'll be a paved shoulder where you can walk and bike. This is what the typical finished product would look like. There's been a lot of talk on social media, so I want to go through some of the things that are not happening. The project will not include any concrete curb and gutter or any storm sewer, because you can't really have curb and gutter without storm sewer. That really, that would add over a million and a half dollars to the project. The pavement, like I said, is not being widened for any additional traffic lanes. There really isn't sufficient right-of-way to do that, and if we did do that, we'd have to actually put in storm-wander ponds by MMSD rules, so that would get into a whole area that we don't want to get into right now. I did discover in designing this that the easements that a lot of you have for the water main, you still own the property. I guess I didn't realize until we started designing this that in 1969, the city bought easements for the water and sanitary sewers. That's why a lot of the fire hydrants are, they seem like they're back in your yard, and they are, it's still your yard, but the city purchased an easement. But what I discovered is that those easements specifically exclude street widening or sidewalks. So we are not going to be widening or putting sidewalks on those easement areas because we can't. So separated sidewalks or paths would not be part of the, the project because we don't actually have enough room to do that. And purchasing new right-of-way is way beyond the scope of this project's budget or timeline. That would, that would actually add hundreds of thousands of dollars and years to the project to negotiate with everybody to buy the right-of-way that we would need to do that, and, and actually, it would probably be prohibited at the Ritten River Parkway and the New Berlin Hills Golf Course. You're really not allowed to purchase parkland. So another thing I want to point out is City of New Berlin is opposed to using any federal funding on this project, which does kind of limit how much we can afford to do. And I wanted to point out, the West Dallas does have a special assessment rate for a rural section, so the $49.38 per foot that you're paying is actually 20% less than what most people in West Dallas are paying is $40, $59 per foot, because they are paying for their curb and gutter, concrete pavement. So you've already gotten a 20% discount because we're not putting in the curb and gutter. I wanted to point that out. We're not doing much modern, not doing much water main work, not doing much sanitary sewer work, because that was all put in in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, and doesn't really need significant repair, and everybody out there already has copper water services. There's no lead, no lead services out on 124th Street, so we don't have to worry about that. So here's the costs of the project. The pavement will be about 1.3 million, just some very minor sanitary sewer work. There is some storm sewer that we do have to do for Seymour Place that's kind of related, and then just a very little bit of water main, so $1.5 million for the project. Here's how the funding is coming. New Berlin is paying half, but since we're actually doing a little bit more sewer than they are, it comes out to 48%, but they're, they're paying 50% of the road. We're paying for our sewer, they're paying for their sewer. Little bit of water main funding coming for the water main work. Stormwater funds are paying for the little bit of storm sewer that we're doing. Sanitary funds pay for a little bit of sanitary sewer we're doing. Special assessments are paying for 15%, $234,000. And then the general fund, the citywide property tax, is paying for the other 26%. Project will include several sustainability benefits. The gravel used to be 100% recycled crushed concrete from old pavements. Recycled fly ash should be added to the cement to reduce the mining for new cement. New asphalt will be made from 20 to 35% old recycled pavements to reduce the mining for that. And then the street lighting, the existing streetlights are on We Energies' poles, and we're not proposing to change that, but we are going to ask We Energies to install new LED fixtures on those poles to help save on electrical costs for the city. So you are getting new LED fixtures on the existing poles. So here's a typical special assessment. I mean, there were certainly lots that were twice this, twice this wide, and there were a few lots that were 90 or so. But 100-foot lot, the assessment rate's $49.38, the cost comes to $4,938. Now, the paper that you got in the mail was not a bill, and it actually said at the top, it's not a bill. The bills would not come out for a year. You wouldn't get a bill until March of 2019, and at that point, you could choose the lump sum payment, five-year installment plan, or 10-year installment plan. If you choose the installment plans, you actually would not be making any payments for 22 months, almost two years, because your first payment would be in December of 2019. So just wanted to stress that. If you're choosing the installment plan, you're actually not making any payments for 22 months. If you choose the 10-year plan, for instance, assuming 4% interest, the special assessments would range from $691 for the first year in 20, in December of 2019, to the 10th year of December 2028, you'd be paying $514. I wanted to explain a little bit about some of the bills. They may seem a little bit larger. It's because the lots are a little bit larger. The lot sizes on 124th Street are very large. They're actually about three times larger than most lots elsewhere in the city. You can see, this is a 30-foot lot, that's a 100-foot lot. As a result, it does cost the city three times as much to serve these larger lots with longer payments, longer water mains, and longer sewers. So the assessment, special assessments based on the French footage ensures that the residents on a 30-foot lot don't pay more than their fair share, and a resident on a 100-foot lot doesn't pay less than their fair share. There's also a few vacant lots on 124th Street, and I just want to point out that there have been several court cases that have established that even a vacant or an underdeveloped lot can be special assessed since the improvements ensure development possible. The owner of the land not, need not make immediate use of an improvement for the special assessment to be deemed reasonable. Here's kind of why we do special assessments. We've been doing it for over 110 years. In the old days, the residents actually paid the full cost, 100%, because they had the unique benefit of the new street in front of their house. On this project, as I said, the city will collect $234,000, or 15% of the total cost. The assessment rate is $49.38 per foot for all residential properties anywhere in the city. No matter how wide the street is, or how high the traffic volumes are, or how high the actual bid prices are, everyone pays the same, everyone is treated equally. So I want to stress that. Even if you lived on a cul-de-sac that was being resurfaced in West Dallas, you would pay $49.38, just like someone on a very busy street like 124th Street. So we don't, we don't punish or we don't penalize people on a busy street. They all pay the same rate. For over 110 years, Wisconsin state law has allowed for special assessments. There have been hundreds of court cases in Wisconsin that have upheld this law as a fair and reasonable method to recoup the cost, so this method has certainly stood the test of time. Special assessments are also the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities, railroads pay their fair share, too. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though 430 properties in the city do not pay any property taxes. So many of these tax-exempt schools, churches, hospitals, and county parks are very large properties that actually encompass 28% of the city's total parcel area, and they only contribute to the city's costs through special assessments. Businesses, corporations, manufacturers also pay a higher assessment rate to ensure that they contribute their fair share. Their assessment rate is $61 to $74 per foot, so the gas station at Oklahoma will be paying $61 per foot. And here's an example. On this particular job, the Long Key County Park System is paying us $52,000 because they have parkland adjacent, and then MMSD is paying us $6,000 because they own the vacant lot. But neither of those entities do pay the city any other taxes, so that's just an example of the money that we're getting from special assessments that we would not get otherwise. This is a map. All the colored lots are tax-exempt parcels. I just want to bring that point home, that these are the 430 parcels in the city that don't pay any taxes. It's 28% of the city, so we'd like to make them pay their fair share, and to do that, we have to charge special assessments. This map shows every parcel in the city that has paid a special assessment in the last 15 years. All the colored areas are people that have paid, the white areas are people that have not. You can see that the majority of the city has paid in the past 15 years, and of course, if you go back 20, 30 years, it would be entirely colored, because everybody has paid in the past 30 to 40 years. So everyone is paying their fair share. These are several other Wisconsin cities that do charge special assessments, mid-sized cities, large cities. Most mid-sized to large cities in Wisconsin do charge special assessments. This is not a complete list. And actually, New Berlin does charge special assessments for water and sewer, but they do not for, for road resurfacing. But every city does things differently. Some cities have different fees that we don't have, and vice versa. So, but most cities are actually using this as a way of recouping their funds as well. And as far as the interest rate, the city is borrowing the money for this project, so the people that are choosing the, the 10-year payment plan, we have to borrow the money from municipal bondholders over the next 10 years, and the city just passes that interest on to the residents that choose the plan. We're not making a profit off of the interest that we're charged, it's just the cost of doing business. And with that, I'll entertain any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Daniels. Are there any questions from the members of the Common Council? Mayor Devine. Alderman Wiegel.
I did have a question, Pete, about the picture you showed with the paved shoulder and the solid white line, and that picture showed that the bike lane marking, are you going to have a bike lane marking in there?
I was thinking yes. I was thinking we would, yes.
As a biker and a pedestrian both, I don't like it when pedestrians walk in something that's a bike lane. So...
Well, maybe we won't. I haven't nailed that decision down, but...
I would have thought there's a standard on that, no?
We'll have to research that, I guess, yeah.
I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the members of the Common Council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Ranky.
Pete, do we have a tentative date when this will take place?
Yeah, we're gonna probably let the contract in May, and the work would get started early June, and would hopefully be done by, before school starts again in September.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Common Council? Okay, seen none. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? I ask that you use the podium up here, and please give us your name and address for the record.
Hello. Hello, my name's Kurt Trader, and my address is 2512 South Seymour. I guess first I should say I was here 29 years ago, or 28 years ago, and at that time, we tried to have a 40-foot-wide road cram down our throats that we soon realized would be nothing more than as soon as they dropped the no trucking ban on the street, a nice thoroughfare for all the trucking terminals on, off of Lincoln between Highway 100 and 124th. Well, that didn't happen, but at the time, there were people that wanted the bike lane on the sides of 124th, which I maintain in some ways would have preserved it, because if you look, it seems like it's really worn on the edges, and that additional asphalt might have prevented that. And we were told we couldn't have it, that there was no way we either were getting a 40-foot-wide road, or we were getting exactly what we had. So long and short of it was, we ended up with what we had, because a lot of people wanted a rural atmosphere, and they did not want to lose all their oak trees, especially between Oklahoma and Cleveland. Now we're here, 28 years later, and after going over the numbers there, I, I realize that our share is still less, but I guess my, my question that I have is, if 124th Street were not as popular and busy as it is, I don't think anybody can argue that that is not a major through-street. It quite honestly has become the alternate Highway 100 from Grange up to Greenfield Avenue. In the morning, I live on Seymour Place and try to turn on to 124th, making a left turn to go down to Cleveland ahead west to work, and I'll sit there and sit there until I finally say, "I'm never going to get out of here unless I'm a little gutsy and take my life into my hands with the people that are zipping down 124th." So now we're going to take a bumpy road, and I won't argue with you about the condition of the road. We're not going to take this bumpy road, and we're going to lay down a nice, smooth road. People already speed on this bumpy one. You, you can hear motorcycles in the summertime when you've got your windows open, going through their gears and accelerating, and they're probably zipping at 65, 70 miles an hour as they come flying south up over the hill and have to hit, hit the brakes onto Cleveland. But anyway, I digress. I guess the objection I have is that this is a major thoroughfare, and I don't think anyone can argue that, like I said. And if you need a criteria for that, just look at what happens when you have snow and you have to plow. I swear, the two Sundays we had snow recently, from early Sunday morning until early Sunday afternoon, every 15 minutes, we had a couple of West Dallas snowplows going down the street. They didn't hit Seymour Place until 2 o'clock on Sunday afternoon. So if you need a criteria for whether a road has a lot of travel or not, just go with the snowplower's schedule, and that will easily differentiate between residential and main thoroughfares. So if, if 124th Street were a cul-de-sac or a neighborhood road, I have no doubts in my mind that that road might have lasted 50 years. Well, because it's a major thoroughfare, gets a lot of traffic, gets beat up, so I guess my only thing is I, as a, a property owner that's been in West Dallas now a long time, getting hit for the second time on an assessment while I've owned this property just kind of stings. And I could, you know, if we had a low property tax rate, it might be one thing, but let's face it, West Dallas is not the cheapest property taxes, especially if you happen to live on the west side of the city. Good luck to you, Mayor Devine, in changing our image, making us more progressive. I welcome all the upscale housing. Maybe that'll pay more of our tax share and lower everybody's overall rate, but in the meantime, I just feel like living in good old Stellis, as we'd like to say, you get taxed to death, that it's a tax hell, and that this street assessment is just further insult to injury, so I'll drop at that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has comments or questions on our public hearing?
I would ask one other thing, and I'm sorry, then I'll, then I'll take my seat. Did anybody on 124th Street or that has property that abut it, like mine is not actually fronting to it, did any of them request a new road?
My name is Fred Gunther. I live at 2526 South 124th Street. I have to agree wholeheartedly with him with the traffic. It, it might as well be renamed Highway 100, because you can't get out of your driveway in the morning, in the afternoon, and with this going to be slightly widened and repaved, my guess is traffic's going to be worse than it is now. He was talking about hearing the, the cars and trucks and motorcycles coming down the street when he has his windows open. I can't open my windows in the morning or in the afternoon because of the traffic. Currently, I have a door knocker on my front door that I had to put a Band-Aid behind because every time the trucks came by, it would actually knock on my door. And I've got wrought iron things hanging on the walls. I had to put two-sided tape behind them because they'd rattle on the walls. And I know it's not the house sitting on unstable ground, but I do have a couple of questions. The speed limit is going to remain 35 miles an hour?
Yes. Yes.
I've got a, I've got a U-shaped driveway between my house and my neighbors. Anytime the police department wants to sit there and put out radar, I'm all for it. The, you were talking about putting something in the cement.
There's not going to be a lot of cement, but we may have to do some curb work at Cleveland or Oklahoma, so not a lot of, not a lot of cement.
That didn't make any sense to me. Next question is, is the payment on this stuff going to be tax deductible, like our property taxes are?
It's between you and your tax accountant. It's different depending on your tax situation. I can't answer that information. That's personal for every person, it's different for every person.
And the driveways, are they going to be asphalt, or the driveway's going to be concrete?
Asphalt.
Okay, because I just paid $5,000 to get a new driveway put in two years ago, and now you're going to take it out and replace my culvert?
Just, just this much. Just this much, yeah. We're going to replace the culvert.
Because I had the city come out and inspect my culvert before they put the driveway in to make sure that it was solid.
Well, the ditch might not be exactly lined up, so we'll have to probably replace
Okay, I think that's all I've got. My biggest concern is the, the speed and the traffic that we're going to have. The semis are terrible, and it's not semis that come by during the daytime at all. I mean, we've got them 24/7 coming up and down 124th Street. And like I said, I can't open my windows in the summertime. I can open up my back windows. My bedroom window on the north side I have to close because the traffic will wake you up starting at 5 o'clock in the morning.
Hello, I'm Keith Steinbrenner, 2490 South 124th Street. One thing I'd like to bring up, especially just reiterating what that gentleman said and what Kurt said, putting a bike lane on 124th, I think is, is just going to be a disaster. And I think it, it just from the comments we heard before, of the speed of the drivers coming down there. And I know I drive 124th Street, and with the traffic that goes through there in the mornings and at nights, and even during the weekends, people have tried to drive a bike, and all of a sudden, you know, people are going around these people, and I see a lot of bike riders that don't have a lot of courtesy towards the drivers, and it's just an accident waiting to happen. Another thing I'd like to mention is, you know, we got a double whammy this year on our taxes. The city taxes went up, and everybody knows what happened with the schools, with their disastrous use of their funds in the last maybe 10 years. And to get a little present like this in January was not the nicest thing in the world. So with that, anybody else that wants to speak, they're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has comments or questions on this item?
Good evening. Steve Bain, twenty-nine, ten, South one hundred twenty-fourth Street. I have a different opinion of the bike lane. I do a lot of biking. I do a lot of running. I put my life in jeopardy every time I do it. I'm really looking forward to a little extra cushion so I can get a little further away from the traffic. Always afraid I'm going to twist an ankle when I got to get off the pavement to get onto the gravel when a car's coming at me. So, as soon as I heard they were doing that, I'm all in for this. I paid for the road before. Not crazy about having to pay it again. But I think it's, I'm willing to do it happily because we get that extra room. And I'll feel a lot safer running and biking. Just wish we had it when my kids were young, but they all made it, so that's good. Thank you very much, Mr. Daniels. I called you one day. You were very helpful and gave me the information, and I appreciate it. And thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the audience on public hearing number one? Oh, yeah.
You're not going to restrict parking at all, right? We'll still be able to park on, because you'd have to park on that lane, that shoulder, so.
Right. We'll have to investigate that, maybe.
Because now, we got the shoulder to park on, so.
Like Wagle said, we might not, Alderman Wagle, we might not be able to put the bike lane markings on there. It'll be a multipurpose lane for walking, biking.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Margaret Pakarsky, and I am the fortunate owner of two properties in West Dallas. I was assessed two years ago at Ninety-First and Rogers. I can tell you that was the most horrific experience for our neighbors and our family. For six months, feels like a year, we lost the entire use of our yard, of our house. Our house was dirty, full of dust, garbage, construction noise at six a.m. I called the city engineer's office multiple times over that project and did not get any satisfaction or relief. They just said, oh, we'll tell the construction company to pick up the garbage. Oh, no problem. That property is for sale since October. I can't sell it. I can't sell it for what I bought it thirteen years ago. And then, you add on a four thousand dollar special assessment. I can't sell it. It sits vacant with a for-sale sign. Nobody's interested in it. So, I guess I ask, who is this project for? Is it for the people who are living here or is it the people who are driving through our community? Because if it's the people who are driving through our community, that's not your right constituency. I can't have my two kids riding on a bike lane on one hundred twenty-fourth Street. I live on Seymour Place, twenty-five, twenty-three, South Seymour Place. So, our side of our lot, our house faces Seymour. Our value is not going to be increased. This is not a property assessment for value that we're ever going to get out of our house, ever. So, I'm going to lose on two properties now. This was supposed to be our forever house. And now, you're creating a major thoroughfare. Friends, neighbors, I'll say they use one hundred twenty-fourth instead of Highway one hundred. And I totally get with the Zoo Interchange Construction that people are looking for alternate routes because you can't get south from going ninety-four east. I totally get that. But that's not who this project is for. This project is for the people who are going north and south and not the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have comments or questions on public hearing number one? Could we get, I don't know if we got your address of the one hundred twenty-fourth Street property?
Twenty-five, twenty-three, South Seymour.
Thank you.
I'm Brad Gustaverson. I'm at twenty-seven hundred, South one hundred twenty-fourth Street. And my property doesn't have, most of it does not have a gravel shoulder on it. It's right at one hundred twenty-fourth and Cleveland, kitty corner to the gas station. So, I'm wondering, will, there's already about three lanes for turning left and right onto Cleveland.
It's not changing.
That's not changing.
And there is curb there already. That's not changing. We might even leave that curb there because it's still in good shape. We're just, it'll all be new asphalt, but the road's not changing there.
Okay. And then, past that curb, once I get past my mailbox, is that when the, I guess, widening of the, or I guess the paving of the gravel would start?
You say you have curb in front of your, you're right by the gas station.
We have a curb, and then, once you go past the driveway, eventually, the curb disappears.
There won't be any widening there. That's how wide the road will be. The bike lane actually will squeeze in between the right turn lane and the through lane.
Okay. And then, how was the, for the repaving project, how was the project decided? Was there a petition made or?
The pavement is in horrible condition, and we can't maintain it anymore. We've been in negotiations with the city in New Berlin for three years. There's one place where I think there's actually a serious sinkhole developing, so it needs to be maintained. We can't maintain it. We can't fill the cracks anymore. We can't fill the potholes anymore. It's costing the city to maintain it to the point that we just, we need to put a new surface down to limit our costs in maintenance. So, it wasn't that anyone asked for it. It's because we're trying to use our maintenance dollars wisely and not fill puddles endlessly on the road.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Daniels, I don't know if you want to just touch on the city's capital improvement plan, how we assess all our streets on what condition they're in.
Right, right.
Five-year plan, ten-year plan, and, you know.
We rate, you know, we rate every street in the city on a scale of one to ten. You know, this is a two or a three. So, we're doing the streets that are the worst. It's in bad shape, so that's how we chose it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions on public hearing number one from the audience? You have to come up to the microphone, please.
And maybe this was asked before, Mary Steinbrenker, twenty-four ninety, South one hundred twenty-fourth Street. When is the rest of the road scheduled to be redone?
Well, we're going to do this part from June through August.
Right, I mean, but the other parts of one hundred twenty-fourth Street?
North of.
Well, both, north or south.
South part was done in two thousand. It'd be another twenty years before we do that. The part north of Lincoln was done in nineteen ninety-four. It's not scheduled. We schedule out about five years, so it's going to be beyond that.
Do you entertain the removal of any shrubs or trees?
No.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have comments or questions on our public hearing this evening? Okay, then we will close public hearing number one. And we will move on to item F on your agendas, which is citizen participation. It's the opportunity for residents to address the council on matters of interest to them. We ask that you keep your comments to approximately five minutes, and we aim to keep this portion of our agenda to about half an hour. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation? Again, we'll need your name and address.
Robert Brown, twenty-one, sixty, South eighty-sixth Street. I want to go over a lawsuit that is scheduled to be heard on March fifth concerning people I've named in it that work either for the police department. And some of them I'm looking at maybe, and some of them, I'll get into that. I'd like to point out, all named defendants acted in concert to violate my civil rights, the freedom of speech, the right to speak on political venues without being attacked, would fall under United States versus Wiesel, U.S. Court of Appeals, Seventh Circuit, nineteen seventy-seven, and then so forth with the names of that. The reason for the lawsuit is this. And actually, the biggest cause of this is the police department, believe it or not. I got attacked by a poll worker who came out a hundred fifty feet from where she registers voters. I got attacked on a public sidewalk. And because of the police did such a horrible job, I got letters from the election commission telling me what a horrible job they did. And they can't get involved because of the horrible job of the police department. I know a few people look at me and say, what is this, bashing the police? Yes, when they do something wrong, are you supposed to keep quiet about it? When they cause you to pay four thousand dollars in bills, am I supposed to say nothing? We'll go on. The officer's name, by the way, I don't blame, I'm not blaming everybody. Just one person named Officer Kyle Webster. I'm naming him because the lawsuit will be heard in a couple of weeks, so it's public record. I can name him. And I'll name, I'll tell you why in a little more detail. He failed to, one of the things he did, failed to measure the distance I was standing from the school where the voting took place. The election commission says, well, she's, the person, I'm also suing former Monica Schultz, who was the clerk after I filed the suit. She's resigned now and no longer here. And the problem is, as he said, she said, the person who attacked me said she was not informed of how to, what the rules are concerning her role as the election poll worker. And she said she was not informed by the city clerk. And therefore, she didn't know that she couldn't run out on a public sidewalk a hundred fifty feet away. And you see my cane. I'm hanging on to this thing now. I can hardly stand. I'm eighty-two, going on three. And I very wobbly, and it don't take much to knock me backwards, which happened. And I injured my neck. I got over close to five thousand dollars in bills. And one of the things that I talk about, the police department, what Officer Webster do, first of all, it took him five times, he couldn't spell my name right. He couldn't get, he didn't fail to measure. Remember, the election commission complained. And so did the district attorney in Milwaukee. Now, that's a state worker, you know, that's election poll workers involved with the county and so forth. And she claims she didn't know, and she didn't know the distance. And it was measured. The affidavits are filed with the city of West Dallas. I was a hundred fifty feet away. And the most she could possibly go would have been a hundred feet, absolutely. There is no way that she could have went further, but she did. Anyway, the police officer failed to do that. He wrote on his report. He asked me what hurt. I said, oh, up here, you know, my head, neck. What do you think he wrote on the police report?
Mr. Brown, you have one minute. Mr. Brown, you have one minute.
Oh, boy. Okay, so I'd like to name somebody defendants here quickly. As I mentioned, of course, the mayor, we have to name him. He's responsible for everything that happens in the city that goes wrong. I know. And we have Kyle Webster. We have Monica Schultz. She's now resigned. Catherine Klein, the one that injured me, police chief, and the city of West Dallas. And the case will be heard, I'm going to close with this, it's scheduled to be heard on the fifth of March. And I'm just mentioning some of the taxpayers complaining about costs. Well, you can add this case to your costs, too. Didn't have to be. She didn't have to run out. The officer did a report. City would have paid my damages. Now, they're going to have to pay a little extra beside the damages. So, that's what happens when you stand, quickly, let me add one more thing here.
Mr. Brown, your time is up.
I understand. And listen, I got to be the rules, but yet, the city doesn't have to, right? When I'm on a, I was just going to mention, the Constitution allows me to stand on a public sidewalk. But apparently, if I take a minute longer talking, I suppose the police will come and drag me out. Is that right? Or something? At any rate, it's a shame. It's a shame a person can't stand on a public sidewalk without being attacked because someone doesn't like who you're voting and what you're voting for. I was against the school referendum. Somebody complained about the taxes. That's what happened. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation?
Violet Brown, twenty-one, sixty, South eighty-sixth Street. I'm the wife of Robert Brown. I want to thank you all for your good service to our community. The only thing is, when we went voting last year, our Constitution was violated, our First Amendment. We just voiced our opinion on a piece of paper, no, for the, what do you call it? Causing us to have more taxes or whatever it was. But anyway, they voted against it, but everybody else said, no, we're going to have this put in, if you like it or not. But during that time, my husband was assaulted. I left, and I went home. He was by himself. And then, all of a sudden, he called me on his cell phone, and he said something happened. And this is what happened. Now, we got a four thousand dollar debt to the medical facility at Prater Hospital. So, I don't know how we're going to pay that. All we did was go voting. We did our constitutional right, and we were violated. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Anderson. I do not live in the city of West Dallas, but my address is twenty-five, twelve, North Oakland. And I'm here representing Victory Garden Initiative. One of my coworkers met an alderwoman at an event a couple of weeks ago and told me that this would be a good opportunity to inform a few people about what we do. We're a small nonprofit that operates throughout Milwaukee County, and we build communities that are able to grow their own food to create a more nutritious, community-based, socially just, and ecologically sustainable food system. And we have some programs coming up that could be of interest to many of residents, many residents within West Dallas. We are actually working with the Zoological Society this year, and we are going to be building several garden beds at three West Alice elementary schools. And the garden beds that we're building are available for anyone in Milwaukee County on a sliding fee scale. So, if that's something that any residents are interested in or they know anyone that could possibly be interested about this, in this program or want to learn a little bit more, they can contact me. I'll leave a couple of informational pamphlets. We also have a similar program this year where we will be installing fruit, planting fruit and nut trees at people's properties. In the past, we have planted twenty-eight community orchards across the Milwaukee area. And this year, we are opening that up. If there are people that don't necessarily have the knowledge or the means to plant their own fruit trees, but they're interested in having access to healthy local food, that's something that we help them with. We will have volunteers plant the trees and provide people with tree care classes to make sure that they are successful in their efforts. We have a similar program with the gardens where we will match people with garden mentor programs. And we have a variety of other programs, both in the city of Milwaukee and throughout Milwaukee County, that encourage people to grow their own food. I will leave a couple of brochures that are specific to the garden building event as well as with some general information on all of our programs. And if you have questions about any of them or are interested in participating, there are many different ways to get involved. I will leave those back at this little table here and stick around for a little bit if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's VictoryGardenInitiative.org. And that is on these, along with the phone number to our office.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Hello, Jennifer Rios, two-two, five-one, South Seventy-second Street in West Dallas. I came tonight to say thank you to all of our council members. I really do appreciate the difficult job that you all do. I do believe that you do it with the best interest of your constituents and mine. But I'm here tonight to say a special thank you to Alder Person Probst and to let you all know how much she is going to be missed. We, I can say personally, she has inspired me and a lot of other people to become more involved citizens, to really pay attention to our government. to become more involved citizens, to really pay attention to our government and what we can do to help our government. And really has done a lot to improve the city of West Alice. And I know she is going to be missed by many. I just, that's really all I wanted to come say today. Thank you to all of you, but especially thank you, Alder Person Probst.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
Noah Lee, 7026 West Rogers Street, here in West Alice. I have to have a disclaimer before I give my comment, just so everything is clear. I am a member of the school board for the West Alice West Milwaukee School District. However, my comments tonight and any night are in no way meant to represent the views of the board as a whole or the West Alice West Milwaukee School District, unless otherwise stated. My comments are my opinions as a private taxpayer of the city of West Alice and a parent of children located in the West Alice West Milwaukee School District. Just so we're clear. So, the first thing I wanted to talk about tonight was polling places. So, first of all, I found it quite strange that I, when I went to look at the West Alice website, I did not find a list of polling places listed by Ward on the website anywhere. When you click on, "Where do I vote?", it takes you to the property search page and asks you to put in your property address to determine where your polling place should be. Unfortunately, that didn't work for me, and I couldn't even do that, try to figure out where all our polling places are actually located at. Luckily, I knew where to vote. I didn't steal the sticker. But it was something that I found a little bit strange. I thought it'd be nice to have just a list by Ward of where your polling place is, something easy enough to put on the link that says, "Where do I vote?" And easy for someone new to the city, or maybe hasn't voted for a while, to easily find where their polling place is actually located. It's kind of a side of my point, but it's, I think it's a good one. So the main reason for my bringing this to your attention tonight is my request that the city look into moving polling locations away from schools. I understand this has been looked at in the past, and that the preference is to keep polling places in public buildings. But I think they should not be located in schools. Until recently, schools were open on electric days. And the disruption that it caused to the school day, combined with safety concerns, resulted in the district making election days an off day for schools. This change was in the best interest of the students and staff, but has also caused a headache for parents who now have to find childcare for the middle of the week. Other area communities have made the switch from having polling locations at schools to other locations. Park pavilions, police stations, fire stations, churches, temples, mosques, M A T C are some possible locations that could be considered. Talking to community groups that have buildings such as the Lions Club, VFW, American Legion, the Masons, Knights of Columbus might also yield a suitable location. What about, what about asking some of the senior living communities if they'd be willing to help out? Many members of these communities are already avid voters, and you may see an increase in voting percentage if they didn't have to travel to polling places in order to vote. I also think that combining polling locations for Ward should be done where feasible, so the total number of polling locations can be reduced. I don't claim to know the specifics regarding a polling location. And it is true that some locations I mentioned may already be used as polling places, but I couldn't figure that out when I tried to find out myself today. Or they might not be willing to help, or they might not be feasible for other reasons. I don't claim to have the answers. But I didn't want to be a complainer without possible solutions. And so I wanted to offer up some possibilities. And I hope that you will look into this in the future. The West Alice is a very large city. I find it hard to believe there can't be other possible locations that could be utilized for polling places other than schools. And I hope that you might consider this again soon in the future. The second topic that I wanted to talk about was regarding amending the tobacco ordinance. So I understand that that's going to be discussed today at the Safety and Health Committee meeting. Well, that's incorrect.
Incorrect, it's going to be held in committee.
In the committee, right.
Yes, it's not, it's not going to be discussed in committee, it's being held.
It's being held in committee. All right, well, that's fine, that's fine. I'll still give my comments, I'll be quick. So I would encourage, I would encourage you to think about how this would change positively the majority of citizens here in West Alice. Or more specifically, for the constituents for the districts you represent. I have not seen any evidence this would fulfill that criteria, only evidence that it would help one person trying to rent a building. Have there been multiple requests by different individuals looking for this amendment? Does changing this ordinance help the city fulfill its goals of a new image? If so, how? Does, do other cities that West Alice would like to emulate, based on the reimagining goals that the city has put forth, have an ordinance in place that is more in line with the current ordinance or more in line with the proposed amendment? These are questions that I would want the answers to if I was in your position. And I hope that they will be considered when eventually this amendment comes to a vote. And with my last 28 seconds, I would like also to thank Alderman Probst for her service here to the city. As my alderperson, she has been very instrumental in my getting more involved in government. She helped me when I was first looking at running for school board and gave me some good advice to be able to get me to the position I'm in today. So I do thank you for your service to the city. You are going to be missed. It's unfortunate the circumstances under which this happened. And I hope that it's not something that will have to be addressed again in the future. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. We will move to item G. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. However, we are changing one room number because there is, there are four minutes left in the election, and they're set up in room 128, running that election. So the room 128 meetings will be moved to room 113. Go to item H, the mayor's report. Just one thing tonight, I want to, and I mentioned this a few weeks ago, that the Nathan Hale girls' basketball team was going for their conference title. Well, they didn't get it two weeks ago that night, but they have gotten it since. So I want to congratulate George Sotiroz and Bill Barbeau and all the young ladies playing for that program. They are having a very exciting season and very much looking forward to seeing them at the state tournament. That's all I've got for the mayor's report. Moving to item I, do we have any alderperson's reports this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alder Person Probst.
I, too, would like to extend my congratulations, both as a former Husky myself, as a student, and then a 20-year member of the faculty there. I was there the last time this happened for the girls. And it was an incredible feeling. I can only imagine what it's got to be like for them now. So congratulations against to the girls and to Coach Sotiroz for the wonderful job that he's done. I also would like to just touch for a moment on the comments made by Noah Lee during the citizen participation. He talked about the moving of polling stations away from schools. While I was a member of the school faculty at the West Alice West Milwaukee School District, I was also a member of the negotiating team. And that was definitely a big, huge part of our negotiations that we did at the time. The teachers' union definitely wanted to see the voting moved out of the schools purely for the safety of the kids. We locked down our schools every other day, except the one day we invite everybody in. And the safety has always been a question. There, I know it seems strange, given the size of West Alice, but there really are not the number of facilities that are needed large enough to handle this. The churches have always been one of those things that we have tried to steer away from as well for the very same reasons. You get into that church and state issue. There are a lot of churches that are used as polling stations around the country, but that has always been one of those underlying issues. And that was something that the city of West, excuse me, that the school district of West Alice definitely looked into. So this is something that's been bandied about for, for the better part of 10 years, at least from the school district angle. So you may want to check with some of those people that have been there long enough that would remember some of those discussions to find out where it was left. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports from the alderpersons?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, I would like to touch some basic, in reference of the cottage massacre, that's what I call it, last week in Parkland, Florida. The major problem that I have myself.
Alderman, I got to rein you in here and remind you that the alderperson's reports are supposed to deal with recent events attended and awards and upcoming events. So you're going to be breaking open meetings if you go further.
Well, I understand that, I know that from, totally I do. But the fact, I mean, I would like to have, just briefly, the fact is that the ruling, sometimes, I understand we break them. But the fact is that, when we talking about having my grandkids going to a middle school or high school, and what really occurred today in our lives, you know, the fact stands that the things that happened back in 1700, when western days, at that time, people used to be loaded with guns because there wasn't a reason for. But today, we have some.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman.
Well, I mean, I just have to address that because it's a big issue that affects every communities within our country.
Mayor Devine, it's not an illegal.
Alderman Vitale, sorry.
Anybody that participates in a meeting, it's an illegal meeting. And you're subject to prosecution under the state law.
Well, I understand, so I'm stopping it, I'm stopping it, I'm stopping it, I'm stopping it.
Alderman, I just suggest, Alderman, I suggest if you want to pursue things like this, we can use the advisory committee to pass legislation to our federal delegates and things like that to, you know, if that's the path this council takes.
Sure, I understand that, I mean, just for my angers, that really what's happened in our country, that's it. But I know the rules, I know.
All right, thank you. Any other alderperson's reports? Any other legal alderperson's reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May, don't go there.
I hope this one's legal. I want to thank the Friends of Lefolli Park for another excellent run at their Empty Bowls program. It was actually our seventh year we found out, my wife and my family attending this event. And it was really, our first year we had gone, I think it was something that really inspired a lot of us to get our neighborhood associations going. And so I just want to thank, again, the Friends of Lefolli Park for an excellent program. Thank you.
Thank you. That's legal. Any other reports from the alderpersons? Seeing none, we'll go to item J.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
Move for approval of the minutes of the common council regular meeting of February 6th, 2018. Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman May. Is there any discussion or amendments to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move to item K, well, ask for a motion to refer item three to the city attorney.
So moved.
You have a motion and a second by Alderman May and then Alderman Barzac. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Standing committee reports this evening, we have none.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alder Person Ranky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.